They're not here. It's five fifteen. Good evening, everybody. For the record, five fifteen P M, December first, two thousand and twenty-two. Time for a special meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. I've called the meeting to order. As always, we start with a pledge to our flag, so I'll go ahead and lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. And for roll call this evening, it looks like we have a quorum of five council members here, so we will proceed and see if either Travis or Councilmember Roger Nostetian show up this evening. As we start usually with our meetings now with citizen comment, so this would be a time that any member of the audience wishes to address the city council on something that's on tonight's agenda or not. Gabriel, anything you want to add? You all right? Okay. All right, seeing no takers. Our first item on today's agenda are the consent items, which includes approving this evening's agenda vouchers and our minutes, and then to approve some work from selling construction on the Tacoma Tacoma Street property. So I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for to approve the agenda and the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings.
And then there's one more item on the.
I'm sorry. And also make a motion for the city council to accept the work performed by the contractor selling construction on the Tacoma Street Improvement Project, City Project number nineteen oh seven, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher.
Second, motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Kulas to adopt this evening's consent items, those being this evening's agenda, our vouchers and minutes from the previous meetings, and a motion for the city council to accept the work performed by the contractor selling construction on the Tacoma Street Improvement Project, City Project nineteen oh seven, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we have a few action items this evening. The first is regarding use of some temporary water rights. So I see Terry O'Keefe is here, so come on up, Terry. I think most of the council members here remember, you know, we've been leasing some regional water rights to some folks down in the basin area. Last year, for instance, they paid us the two hundred and some thousand dollars. They never used them. But this has a regular updating to the lease every year we're required to do it. So Terry's back to go over that with us. So it's all yours.
I'm Terry O'Keefe, Assistant Utility Manager here at the city. So as the agenda says, I'm here to ask for council's approval to have the mayor sign both the third addendum and also the two thousand twenty-three seasonal change application that's required by the Department of Ecology. There was some slight wording changes in third addendum from what I sent out in the packet earlier. It was just some wording stuff, and Tammy has the newest newest version of it. It was just minor words, lawyer stuff.
And lawyer things are always minor words, by the way. Just in case they wanted it now.
So really, what this is, I'll make this brief. Regional Water, which is made up of the city and the Schlan County P U D and East Wenatchee Water District. We, Regional has extra water rights that we're not using at this point in time, so we are leasing them out to Crown, who then their Crown is like a broker for water rights, and then they're leasing them out to Granite Farms, which is placed down in the Tri-Cities, correct? So that's all the third addendum is. The seasonal change application is just the Department of Ecology's little, you know, we need to sign off with them. So that's all that is. We did this for the last couple of years. Yep, just paperwork needs to be signed to make this deal go through. Last year, we made, I think, like I said, two hundred and one thousand or so after taxes, and this year it's supposed to be two hundred and five. And by this, when we first did this contract, it was supposed to be to the year two thousand thirty-two, and by that time, we were going to be making like two hundred and forty-eight thousand a year. So that's pretty much it.
It's a good use of an asset that we're not using.
Right.
It helps the regional water.
Yep, just goes in the pot.
Goes in the pot.
And we're not, like we talked earlier, we're not selling any water rights. We're just loading them out, and I think the way the contract reads, we can get them. If something's not going the way we like it, we can just end the deal and get them right back.
Which is why, which is why when you see they're using them on roll crop and not on other stuff, because they just need them for the one year and then yeah.
Yeah.
Great. Any questions for Terry?
So just just to be clear on the words, it's like spelling things. I mean, I noticed a couple of places where it said crow instead of crown. It's just little things like that that have been cleaned up.
Yeah, the the email we got from Pete, do you remember exactly what it was that? I can't remember exactly what it what the changes were, but I know that they were going back and forth with some wording between Crown, I think it was, it was a Crown or Granite's lawyer and Mr. Fraley.
Yep, I'll I'll jump in. We, there were just say some minor wording between the Crown attorney and our attorney that represents us on Regional, which is Pete Fraley. And so, but Councilmember Huffaker will also take a look through that tomorrow to make sure that all the typos got picked up, so.
Okay, thank you. Hey, any questions for Terry? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I will move for city council to approve the third addendum to Temporary Water Right Mitigation Agreement with Crown Columbia Water Resources L L C and authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement and the two thousand twenty-three seasonal change application.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Poyer, to approve the third addendum to the Temporary Water Right Mitigation Agreement with Crown Columbia Water Resources L L C and authorize the mayor's signature on the agreement and the two thousand twenty-three seasonal change application. Any discussion?
Just a lot of good things. I mean, it's it's something the city has that we either use it or we, you know, to be able to give these rights, and we can get them back. And so it's just a source of income, pretty much.
Yeah, for the regional pot.
For the regional pot, which is nice.
All right, any other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Terry.
Thank you.
For the record, we will note that Councilmember Hornby is joining us. Next item is regarding an exclusive listing agreement with our friends Retail Specialist. So Laura, it's all yours.
Good evening, Council. Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. The item before you is the Exclusive Listing Agreement between the city and Retail Specialist. This is basically a proposed extension to the existing contract. So we had an M O U with Retail Strategies for the past year, which expired in September. That was the contract that allowed them to market the North Wenatchee property for us. It also had the ability for them to be the developer for the property if they so chose to do that, once they did some more due diligence on the prop, due diligence on the property. This agreement continues to move the listing component, so the marketing component, for another six months. It does not include the ability for them to be the sole developer anymore, though, so in essence, they are acting as our real estate broker for the property. It's for six months. There's a variety of different agencies here because Retail Specialist is an Alabama company, and they're actually under a different division, and so they're using Danes Capital. So happy to explain that if there's additional questions, they're also partnering with a local Washington firm since they're not licensed to do business in Washington. So that being said, it's a six-month agreement for them to continue to market the property for us. The the property has been a little bit quiet for some time. We're working on securing the anchor tenant. We anticipate that once we secure that anchor tenant, we'll really be able to do a lot of more work. So the six months should provide us the ability to continue to vet those additional proposals. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Did we get any action at all from this company in the last year? Did we get a couple of proposals?
We did. We, I had sent them a list of all of the folks that had been calling with interest, and they helped us vet those. They've talked to a couple of hoteliers. They've cop talked to a couple of multifamily developers. A lot of folks kind of want to know what else is happening, right? So they are have been taking on all of that work, as well as they did go to a conference to help market the property, the big, you know, retail conference in Nevada last year. So they're still actively marketing the property for us in that manner, too.
I guess my question kind of goes along with Mike's, you know, it's it's like they've had it for a year and we really have, you know, from our perspective, we've seen no results.
Right.
Are we?
So we've got the.
Are we doing the right thing by staying with the right company?
So we've got the one that we're working on a D A with, that we can't go public with, that we've talked about in executive session, so we're quite a ways along that. That's for the corner lot, and what's complicated about the corner lot is we're heading towards East Wenatchee because we've got to do an underpass. It's going to go and then the turn to go on Columbia to the south is going to be, and so they're trying to figure out where on that parcel is this building going to go, where's the parking going to go? So we've been working with Retail Strategist and the potential and trying to sort of fit that in there. And once that gets fit, then we can start talking about numbers two and three and four and sort of where they all sort of fit in that. And it's a little bit early because we're just trying to figure out how the number one tenant.
Yeah.
And how much land. And so we talk weekly about sort of, and they've got a list of ones that I don't want to talk about here that we can talk about offline.
I'm just looking at the thousand-foot level.
No, 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 I get it, yeah.
We're we're progressive.
You feel like they're really bringing in.
And I'm with you. What I sort of thought we were going to get was, here's this eight-acre parcel, and we're going to see this person's going here and that person's going there, and and ultimately what ended up happening is like, so here's your anchor tenant, and these people aren't going to sign up until they see your anchor tenant is building.
Right.
And so we're, yeah.
You you remember when we first started doing this, it's like, you know, the property's going to come in and go right out the other side, and we're not going to hang on to it for any length of time and.
That was four years ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Last one was a year, this is six months.
Last one was a year, this is six months, and and yes, Councilmember, it it we have not also pushed them because we are working through this anchor tenant, and we anticipate that once that's available, especially to market for them, to be able to say, hey, we've got blank. You know, when you see a target comes in, there's all kinds of people that want to be around target, right? And so that's sort of the game plan, and so it has been quiet, but that's the reason why.
Okay. Thank you.
And the good news is, is we are out to bid now on Mega Kitrick, so Mega Kitrick is to the point that it is out to bid, yeah, so.
For reals?
That is good news.
Well, we're not telling you, Steve. It's like, you know, your retiree.
We were just talking about that today.
Yeah, no, it's out to bid, so at least that's what Jake told me. Is it out to bid?
It is out to bid.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, so we're excited that that's out to bid, and that'll hopefully start construction first part of next year, yeah. All right, any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the listing agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Retail Specialist L L C and Alabama Limited Liability Company and Danes Capital Regarding the North Wenatchee Redevelopment Project and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Poyer, second by Councilmember Huffaker, to approve the listing agreement between the city of Wenatchee and Retail Specialist L L C and Alabama Limited Liability Company and Danes Capital Regarding the North Wenatchee Redevelopment Project and authorize the mayor's signature. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Laura. Mr. Erickson. A little bit of code changing?
Little bit, little bit, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Council, Dave Erickson, Parks Recreation Director for the city. Tonight, I'm here to request approval of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, which would amend the Arts Rec and Park Rec, Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. Basically, back in two thousand and fifteen, we combined the Arts Commission with the Park Board. Both were seven-member commissions or boards. Brought them together because the services and and topics that they were discussing were very similar. So at that time, we had nine members that wanted to serve on the commission, so we brought everybody on. Well, now we would like to bring it back to seven-member commission, so it's more consistent with everything else that we, all the other boards and commissions that are out there, more easy to manage, more efficient for us. So really, that's the the change. This wouldn't impact any of the current commissioners. It would all all be the same.
Is that because we're short two right now?
He wants to say he's got a full board and he's short two, that's why.
That's how we tell him, right. No, at the end of the year, we will have two two expired terms.
Right. Any questions for David? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I make a motion for state council to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, amending Wenatchee Municipal Code, Chapter one point four eight point zero three zero, relating to the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Huffaker, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-two dash thirty-one, amending the Wenatchee Municipal Code, Chapter one forty-eight point oh three oh, relating to the Arts Recreation and Parks Commission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, David.
Thanks, everybody.
Changing our parking code? Danielle?
Yes. The exciting topic of parking. So there was a new statute that was passed by the Washington State Legislature, and it changed how parking infractions are going to be processed. So our parking code just needs to be updated to conform to the new statute. The new statute goes into effect January one, and so we have a mirrored effective date with our new ordinance also.
So when I was reading it, just we just can charge twenty-five dollars no matter what the ticket.
Well, that's not the new statute. That's how we are amending our code. And one of the reasons why we are amending that is because we only have so much space now on the infraction. And prior to this ordinance, we had a two-tiered late fee penalty, a twenty-dollar and then a twenty-five-dollar. Well, there's not enough space on the infraction to put the various late penalties, so we made it a flat fee late penalty of twenty-five for everything.
Anything else on the parking changes that we should know about, that the state changed that we're trying to adopt to, or is it mostly just the fee structure?
It's it's not just the fee structure. It's also the response to the ticket. So there used to be only three options that you could do, which is pay the ticket, ask for contested hearing, or ask for a mitigation hearing. Now, there's four options that you can do, those three, plus the fourth one being, I admit the ticket, but I can't afford the ticket, so please don't fine me type of option.
The the payment plan.
Yeah, it's the payment plan.
I was going to say, it was, it was, don't find me, it was payment, right?
But in our county, it's it's a don't find me.
All right. Any questions for Danielle?
Well, that's a big difference.
They they put the base, they drop it all the way down to the base penalty, so it's the minimal amount of fine that they'll charge.
Okay, they would still pay something.
No, I think you got your answer. It's a gray area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a good not answer.
It's a good. So 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 taking that, though, would you expect a number of people just?
We already have a parking problem downtown. You take the teeth away from it, it's going to be a problem.
It isn't just downtown.
So I would say.
That's where the big problem is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say a majority of the people pay.
Yeah.
So it's those ones that are indigent that also have coupled with it a criminal charge.
Yeah.
That you're not going to see a lot, so.
All right. Any other questions for Danielle? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty, amending Wenatchee City Code, Section six B point zero eight point zero one zero, relating to parking violations and fines.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Harold, to adopt ordinance number two thousand twenty-two dash thirty, amending Wenatchee City Code, Section six B point oh eight point oh one oh, relating to parking violations and fines. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Danielle. So our next is our council committee assignments, and I think I think two parts of this is figuring out what we're doing for next year, so when we come back on Thursday for our final meeting of the year, we can adopt a resolution that basically gets everything set for two thousand and twenty-three. If you want to do the mayor pro tem tonight as well, effective one one of two thousand and twenty-three, add that to the same items. So you guys got your list. I guess, you know, in terms of the the Finance Committee and Public Safety Committee, you know, you always like to rotate those. So Keith, you're not on either one? Are you interested in doing one or the other? I know your work schedule.
Yeah, Fin Finance Committee, unfortunately, that just that just conflicts on on Thursdays in the afternoon.
I'll stay on Finance if that will help.
So I think, and Jose, can you, I know you always struggle with Public Works at eight fifteen in the morning, but Finance you seem to be able to make.
I I can make it, but I mean, if somebody else wants to jump in, I don't mind. Otherwise, I won't stay the same.
You know, I always have the thing that if you were on it, you can flip it.
Councilmember Huffaker, well, two things. One, two, three, four, fifth committee down.
Public Works.
The what?
That should be Public Services Committee, because it's 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 broad, broader than Public Works and Economic Development.
What is he looking at?
He's looking at the title of it.
And Councilmember Huffaker indicated that he would be willing to do that as in lieu of me.
So so Public Services Committee would then be Keith. And let's let's sort of see where Finance, let's do Finance quickly just to sort of. So Travis, do you want to be on Finance? You get the option.
What day is that?
It's Tuesday morning, no. It's Thursday afternoon, three. Twice a month, sort of before council.
Yeah, that'll be fine. Unless someone else wants it.
If nobody wants it, I'll do it.
It's sort of the the, you were on Public Works Committee, and now you're switching to Finance Committee.
Oh, you want me to switch?
Well, yes, because you can't be on both.
Oh, okay, I understand.
It would be too many, too many committees for you.
Okay, you tell me whatever you want me to do.
Okay.
You take Finance.
Huh?
You want to take Finance?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Will you take Public Works? Okay.
That's no change for me then.
I'm horrible in the mornings.
We heard that.
All right, so on Finance Committee, we have decided that Linda's going to be on Finance.
Yes.
Okay, and Mike's going to be on Finance. And either Jose. Jose, do you want to be on Finance?
Anybody else want to take it? Yes, no, right, I'll stay on it.
Okay, so Finance Committee is Jose, Linda, and Mike. So that would mean Public Works is Keith. And then we can decide Linda's a no. Mark, you want to continue to do Public Works, or do you want to take a rest?
No, that's the one I wanted to drop out of.
You want to drop out of Public Works?
Yeah, that's why, that's why I was hitting up Councilmember Huffaker to.
So then we'll have Travis do Public Works, and we'll have Top do Public Works. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Is that what you're all thinking? Okay. Yeah, so Mark is the one that's not on any of the committees, which is fine. There's always one that, right, because three plus three equals six, and there's seven of us.
Oh, yeah, there is, isn't there?
We'll let you stay on some of your other committees. All right, any thoughts on mayor pro tem while we're doing this, so we can just have the ordinance set? I don't know how you all, how you guys flip that coin.
Whose turn is it?
Not mine. Yeah, that's because you just did it.
I have done it.
Jose has not done it yet.
I think either Jose or Top.
Or Mike.
Have you done it, Mike? Did you do it the first time around?
I did, first time around.
Jose hasn't been. Linda, you've been?
Yeah.
Do Jose?
Jose.
Okay.
Jose it is, huh?
All right.
No, it's Jose. I like that.
You're going to be awesome.
All right.
You're awesome, Linda.
So part of your, part of your ordinance, you'll draft, we'll have that on there, effective one one of two thousand and twenty-three.
Is it appropriate for mayor pro tem to be mayor pro tem? Or does it matter?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Yeah, he's just sitting in.
Okay, yes, I want to make sure.
It'll be fine.
His election will be two years from now.
No, it's next year.
Oh, okay, it's in May.
Yeah, next year. We have to have a, yeah, so. All right, solid waste. Keith, you good with that?
Yeah, I I still enjoy that.
Okay, Health District Board.
Plus somebody else is just dying to take it away from me.
Since Top's not here, we'll keep him on the Health District Board. Although, we're not even on the Health District. Are we on next year? Every other year.
So yesterday we would be, we're not on this year.
We're on the rotating Health District Board when the governor re-made that, right, and they put all the public folks on there. Each of the counties got a seat, and then East Wenatchee and Wenatchee had to have alternating seats.
I hadn't heard that.
So Gerald Lee has been representing the two cities, and I think it's every other year.
That's my understanding.
Is that your understanding? And I'm just talking sort of off the back of my pocket.
That change was happening when I was on there, and I think that happened, and then, so Top was supposed to be, but we weren't on there.
We weren't on there, okay. So we'll just leave Top on it, and then we'll just have to.
Here, I've been feeling sorry for you.
Yeah. So Tammy, could you confirm with the clerk of the Health District Board that that is in fact what's going on? And if so, we'll leave Top as our representative transportation counsel. Mike, you still want to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, and do we want an alternate? Does Jose, you sort of mentioned wanting to do that. Do you want to be an alternate there?
If if Travis is okay with it.
You okay with it?
I never went to one, so fine.
Okay.
And if, and if we're talking alternates, let's go back up to.
Solid waste?
Let's go back up to Public Works, because I was the alternate there, and so now.
So what generally what we'll do on Public Works, if we know that only two people show up, our first person we're going to call is Mark, because he's not on any committee, and if he can make it, great, and then we'll work down the list.
So you'll be the old.
Yeah, we just sort of, we we, I don't know that we actually technically have had, I guess we have, but we just sort of.
I I think sometimes we even just, when we knew we weren't on the Thursday council meeting, said, hey, we need somebody to fill in.
Yeah, so I I think the key for me is trying to get three folks in there that we can talk about things.
That works for me. You can put me as an alt.
Okay. Uh, where are we at now? Code Enforcement, nothing, Community Action Council, so that's been Top. I think he's enjoyed that, so we'll leave that just the way it is, I think. Disability Board is okay?
Yeah, I'm okay.
Fireman's Pension, you guys have been meeting a lot, Mike, on the Fireman's Pension.
I forgot I was on it.
Grievance Committee, we haven't haven't met grievance in a couple of years, so that's good. Home Steering Committee, Linda?
Sure, absolutely, please.
I know, that's your spot.
You can keep me for it.
I love it.
Mark, you on good for link?
Yeah.
Okay. So Lodging Tax and T P A, should we look at those differently so we don't send the entire council to a meeting, so should we put someone on both of those committees?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we want to plan on doing that?
Which would mean for LTAC, they they're de facto would be the chair of Lodging, because Lodging Tax Advisor Committee has to be chaired by an elected official.
Okay. So Mike, do you want to, can you go? Or you, can we just put Mark Kulas then on T P A with either Mike or Top?
With Top.
That's what I said, with Top?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so T P A then is Mark, Kulas, and Top. And Mike is no longer going to those, okay?
He's doing LTAC? He's doing LTAC?
So he is doing TP, Mark, and, yes, we're combining, so Mark and Top technically will be T P A, and Mark will technically be Lodging Tax. So Masawa's good. Mark, Museum, where are you at with that?
I I I I would retain the museum. Here here's, I explain this to the mayor, maybe to some of you, that the museum is like a four-in-one thing. It isn't just this meeting. You're on at least one other committee, and then other things happen and volunteer events that you're expected to participate in. Those folks are really committed to the museum.
Yeah.
I mean, they really are. I don't know how someone would do it if, unless they were retired or semi-retired, to be honest with you. So you have, I'll do it for one more year. And we're starting the capital plan, which I I'm playing with that, but just be thinking about that
Yeah.
for two thousand and twenty-four, that it's, I mean, it's.
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
It's a lot of work.
Yeah. All right.
They are really outstanding individuals on the board.
Yeah.
It's just that they need a lot.
All right, so we'll leave Mark on the museum, Police Advisory Board, I'm on that, Public Facility District, Town Toyota Center, I'm the only one of us that can actually serve on that committee, so we'll retain that. I'll continue to do Regional Water unless someone has a real excitement over that. We meet a couple of times a year. Rivercom, so Travis, Mike, is that working out good on the every other meeting sort of thing, or you guys need to tell me? I have not been watching.
I'm okay with it. We communicate pretty well on it, but every other, every other month, I can't make that meeting.
Yeah, so it's never been missed. I know prior, there was talk about not having. Yeah, I, so it's never been missed. I know prior, we, there was talk about not having a city council person, but I know it's never been missed this year.
Okay.
And it does seem like we communicate well.
Okay, I'm fine leaving it.
Unless somebody want, else wants to, to do it every other month.
No, I'm fine with you guys doing it. I think that's great.
Okay.
Keith, how's the Stormwater Advisory Committee going?
Varies. It varies a lot.
I know, it says right there, the meeting time and date of very much.
I mean, you, they usually get input from people once a-
Once a year?
Okay, so I'm, I'm fine with it.
Uh, Downtown Association, someone else want to take that? I know Travis, he's sort of in your wheelhouse in terms of your district.
It's in my district. If someone really wants it, great. I'm okay with it.
You want to go with Travis doing that?
I think it'd be good if he was there, especially having a new, uh, executive director coming in.
Yeah, and I think with his role on PIBUS plus his district, I think it, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I think it's perfect.
And Chamber of Commerce, Keith, is that still something you enjoy doing or what's the, what's the thought there?
I'm, I'm okay unless there's, Travis, you had mentioned-
I was just trying to help out and, and add one more thing if I could to help out the clause. So if you want a break, I'll take it.
Or do you want to do a tag team?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll, we'll just put one on and one alt and you guys just go back and forth and make sure that somebody's there.
I'm currently alt, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's just kind of do an every other type of thing or something.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
For the, where is it? For the homeless.
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have here for the Shilane County.
What's the name of the Homeless Steering Committee now? Is it the Columbia River?
That's the local one, but then there's still Shilane County where we alternate with Wenatchi, East Wenatchee and Wenatchee for the voting position and Jose's been, uh, filling that spot.
Okay, so we'll need to add that to the list?
So is, we're not on there next year? We are on there?
We are on there. We're, we're always represented on there, it's just that this year, he's not a voting member. Next year, he will be.
So let's, let's clean that part up, Tammy, in terms of making sure that our housing task force has the right name on it and the right person and if we're on the county one as well, and let's make sure we get Jose on that one, on the resolution. All right. Yes. The what? We don't care about public safety. So why would we worry about the committee?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, all right.
I care about it.
Did you get that, Gabriel?
Forced down.
Public Safety is, uh, Jose, Linda and Keith.
I want to stay.
I, I want to stay too. I'd like to stay if I can.
Okay, any problems with leaving it the way it is?
Nope.
And we'll try to meet a little bit more often, I know every, every other month and I think we missed one, so we'll try to make sure we're back on the, a more reasonable, um, meeting time for that.
Yeah, I think consistency would be better.
Yeah. All right. So Tammy, you got all that? Okay, so we will adopt, uh, nice to do it, I think, at this meeting so that when we get to twenty twenty-three, that you guys are all up and going and we'll get notifications out every place that needs to happen and so, um, yeah, and we'll have those, uh, as part of our consent item next Thursday. Mayor's Report. Laura, I don't know. I, uh, I did spend some time, I did get to tour the Microsoft facility in East Wenatchee on, uh, Tuesday, so that was interesting. That didn't let us see a lot, but, um, their one building's two hundred and forty thousand square feet and they're building six of them there and six on the other side, so, uh, security everywhere and, yeah, it's a quite a, it's quite a facility. Between employees at Microsoft and then subcontractors for security, other stuff, there may be a lot of people working there. I don't know if it's going to be fifty people a building or seventy-five people a building, but it's, it's quite a little deal, so. Um, so we did that. Help me out, Laura. Plug in there.
Um, a couple of items, so, um, you know, the city every year does the Social Justice and Civil Rights Award, so I met with the museum and also the NCW Equity Alliance to try to put together January's event. Um, we've done an abbreviated version of the awards the last two years because of COVID, uh, but we're hoping to really, um, you know, bring this program back and with the, um, support of the Equity Alliance to really get, um, lots of good nominations. So we're going to do a concentrated social media push and the museum's really going to help us with a lot of the advertising and, um, it really goes to help support the event at the end of the day, so it's a really, really nice partnership. So we're excited to do that. We'll also be adding a second award for, um, diversity, equity and inclusion. So we'll have that category as well. Um, I'll post it on our social media probably tomorrow and so you'll see some of that. Confluence Parkway is moving forward. Um, we hope to release our environmental assessment in the coming weeks. Um, we'll have a open house tentatively set for December thirteenth. Um, so that's sort of the, you know, we're, we're moving, we're moving that project forward. We're excited to do that, so keep an eye out for that.
Is that open house going to be in this room?
That'll be here at council chambers. Um, that'll be a presentation and then just sort of a Q and A to collect comments and to basically say, here's the report, come take a look at it, provide us with feedback, did we miss anything? Um, and then once, there'll be a forty-five day comment period for the public. Um, and then at that point in time, we'll present that to Federal Highways and say, we think we're done. What do you guys think? And so that'll help wrap up that process. And last but not least, First Friday is tomorrow. Um, so that's the Downtown Association, but they'll also be doing the Christmas tree lighting at four PM tomorrow in front of the pack. So, uh, lots of shops are open and lots of sales and music and art, so just, um, something to put on your calendars as well to attend.
Councilmember Kulas and I were talking about the building. Hopefully you can all see it from your house, but I think it looks great, uh, being lit. And I know Alyssa is working hard on, on getting our Christmas colors put together maybe in the next week or so. So we may see some, some, uh, red and green stripes maybe, hopefully sometime next week, so.
Laura, I have a question. The museum, is, they're doing the multicultural event?
Okay.
So, um, last time they did it, I couldn't be there, but I've, in the past, brought my camera and I have a printer that, uh, where I can take photos of the kids and just print them right up, oh, right there. We put it in a little passport for them.
Yeah.
So I'd love to volunteer to do that.
Yeah, I'll, um-
It's a lot of fun.[1692.10]